Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the Constitution of the United States, and to the Constitution of the Constitution of America.
Ms. Garing, can you please do the roll call?
Ms. Ahrens.
Present.
Dr. Delwich.
Here.
Mr. Canaan.
Here.
Mrs. Lamming.
Here.
Mrs. Powsky.
Here.
Ms. Petrecko.
Present.
Dr. Steer.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Waldorf.
Present.
Nine Board Members present.
Thank you. We have a very full agenda this evening, but before we would begin, I would like to ask you to join me for a mindful minute, similar to the mindful minutes that our students experience at the start of their school days. Take a moment to find a comfortable position with both feet connected to the floor, whether you're seated or standing, and then allow your gaze to soften or your eyelids to gently close if you're comfortable. Bring your awareness to your breath. Notice the air as you breathe in. Is it cool or warm? Notice the air as you breathe out. Did it change? Continue to bring your awareness to each inhale and each exhale. If your eyes closed, gently blink them open. Thank you for participating this evening. Mindfulness can be a very useful tool at any time that you feel the need to slow down or just be present. You may be wondering why we are having our School Board Action Meeting tonight on a Wednesday. Typically, we meet on Thursdays. The explanation begins on this day four years ago, when legislation was signed into law making Juneteenth a national holiday. The next day was the first federal observance of the holiday that had long been recognized and celebrated in black communities throughout the country. In honor of Juneteenth, we will be conducting our work tonight. For those of you not familiar with the Juneteenth holiday, the holiday marks the day in 1865 when 2,000 Union troops arrived and galvested in Texas, bringing the long overdue news that slavery ended with the Emancipation Proclamation issued by President Lincoln on January 1st, 1863. So, may we take time tomorrow to celebrate this turning point in our history and to remember the importance of the freedom that Juneteenth represents. As school is out as of today, we will not have student reports at tonight's meeting, so I'm going to take the time to highlight two wonderful things that have happened in our district since our last meeting. One of them was at the elementary level. I'd like to highlight the rededication of the Craig-Doster Bridge and the dedication of the Kira Gordon and Karen Murphy Gordon Memorial Bench and Memory Garden. The event was a beautiful community celebration of life. Thanks to the tireless efforts of Manner Elementary Student or Teacher Martha Grothman, local businesses, and a team of volunteers including students and community members, this wonderful space has been created to honor the memory of those who we've lost way too soon. It was a beautiful evening and a wonderful celebration. At the high school level, I'd like to highlight the Second Annual Culture Fair. Students with roots from and many different countries from across the globe shared information with other students about the food, the music, the traditions, the clothing, and so much more that came with their families when they made their lives here in the United States. It was a beautiful day and a fabulous celebration of the diversity of all of our backgrounds and the experience that make our community so vibrant. Before we move on, I would like to take a moment to set everyone's expectations for our board meetings. Our action meetings are broken into three parts, the first being the welcome, recognitions, and reports, followed by public comment. Public comment is the time in which you, the public, have five minutes to address the board for up to a total of 90 minutes. After public comment is concluded, the business portion of the meeting follows. This is the board's time to discuss in the open the issues affecting the district and to take official action on agenda items. The board needs to be able to conduct business during this period, and everyone in attendance needs to be able to hear what is happening. If members of the public have opinions or questions, please do not call out or disrupt the meeting. You can submit your opinions and questions to the board by email, letter, or by attending a future meeting. Anyone who disrupts the meeting may be asked to leave. Thank you for your help in making this a productive, safe, and informative meeting. Tonight, the board met an executive session before the meeting to discuss several matters involving a litigation matter involving personal injury-based claims for a former student, two litigation matters involving appeals from the Office of Open Record Decisions related to the right to know law, litigation matters involving administrative complaint by a former employee and breach of contract, personnel matters related to the investigation of alleged misconduct by several employees, and finally, the district-wide security practices which, if discussed in public, would jeopardize emergency preparedness, public safety, and property protection. We will begin by recognizing the Prom Committee, those volunteers who helped make this year's prom the best prom anywhere. Dr. Smith?
Sure, thank you very much. So, we are very fortunate in Pensbury for a number of reasons. We've had two major events over the last month, graduation and prom being those, in addition to the clapouts and all the other wonderful events. But what is very fortunate for many of us is that we enter these areas, be it east or be it the stadium, and they are set up and they look wonderful. I literally, for the day of prom weekend on Friday, I walked through east at about noon, and it was just looked like east, as it normally does. And then I was there at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday morning, and it was transformed into another dimension. And that doesn't happen by accident, and it really happens because there is a small army of people who have worked tirelessly throughout the entire year, making sure that that night was incredibly special for the students of Pensbury. So, tell you, we recognize all those folks who were behind the scenes. I would walk through on the occasional evening after a meeting, and folks were painting murals in the hallway on the floor. I know many of the board members here participated in various aspects of it, but these folks in particular that we're going to recognize this evening, and a host of other students and parents, put in hours and hours and hours of time to make east special. And those of you who are able to walk into that building, whether it is the walkthrough that took place during the day, or whether you were a chaperone or helped out, it was amazing. This one was particularly over the top, I thought, from everything, from the phoenix that went up and down to the dragon that flew overhead, to the incredible murals, and the attention to detail, and I said this to Maggie Weber, just the eyes, LED in the dragon's eyes on the mural walls, it was just something, it's nothing short of amazing and is a true Pensbury tradition that is happening and happens because of the work of so many people. So, without further ado, I really just want to recognize a group of people, those folks who are here tonight, but yet the many, many other folks who are working throughout the year to help this out, to make this special for our students. So, first, I'm going to start with Pensbury High School Campus Principal, Mr. Reggie Meadows, if you could stand and be recognized. Ms. Mary Ann Daley. In addition to many of her other duties, Mary Ann is kind of the entertainment chair, who is responsible for procuring the entertainment for the evening. She's literally starting now, literally on prom night, she pulled me aside and said, "I got an idea for next year." It's a mum's word, but literally, I mean, the passion for this and making sure it's special and making sure that we all keep our mouths shut is Mary Ann's job, so really thank you to her also. And then, really, the folks who oversaw the creation of the prom, from the theme to the actual doing. Maggie Weber, please stand. And hopefully, you've known, noticed that the prom has gone high-tech with some of the things, and again, folks working for weeks and weeks and weeks ahead of it. I want to mention two folks that kind of tag-teaming, Mr. Dan Mahoney and Mr. Harry Steinmetz for their work and their career. One of the folks who are working to make sure that we're getting all the kids, because again, where there's tons of kids who are taking active interest in creating this prom environment, Ms. Amanda Durham, please stand. Ms. Lindsey Gibbo. Laura Tittle, she responded, is she here?
She's at home.
She's at home, okay. Laura Tittle's enjoying the last day of school. Debbie O'Hara, thank you for your efforts. Janine Miller. Kristen Middleton. And the reason why you can hear at the prom, and you can hear us tonight, Mr. John Rose. So, again, there's a host of people, and I'm thankful for the people who came this evening. We really thought as we walked through the prom, we needed to recognize the folks who are committed to making this prom continue to be the best prom in America. So, I want to thank you all for your efforts. Mr. Meadows or Maggie, did I forget anybody? Or do you think we're good? Okay, great. Oh, students, all right, very good. Okay, so, we are going to, now wait till you see this list of students who participate, and I will say, as you mentioned, oh, let me, the sculptor too, if you went through, Mr. Curtis May, all their work. And you know, the grad volunteers, folks who come back to participate, a big thank you to them, and the 2025 chairs and prom leads are students, so thank you for all those. And the prom managers, and these were former prom escorts, so thank you to all of their work also. And what other prom in America has a student harpist, Abigail Greenberg, and a student living statue, if you saw that, Maya Wond. This is an amazing Pensbury tradition, it is not going anywhere, and as I've mentioned several times, as we designed the new high school, I know that there's been input on prom design and how we're going to run the parade in the new space. So, again, thank you all for coming out, and thank you all for your commitment to Pensbury. You really have made this a special event for every student in our district.
Thank you. Next, we move on to the LIFT Character Awards. Mr. Sanderson and Mr. and Mrs. Katchatory, if you could please come forward to present one award from last month and this month's awards.
While they're setting up the prom awards, we have the budget presentation tonight. If you want to stick around for that, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting, but it's, that's a keeper, the budget one. Mr. Mahoney, I know you're looking for it, but you're...
Thank you, Dr. Steer. Tonight, we are recognizing last month's character asset, leadership, and this month's pride in being a member of the community. Each nomination we received highlighted a student who exemplifies these traits on a daily basis, which made it very difficult to choose just four. I would like to thank the principals and staff members who took the time to nominate the students this month. Now I will pass things over to Mr. and Mrs. Kachatory. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanderson. Will each of our LIFT Award winners stand and join us at the table, and please face the audience, so everyone can see you. Great, thank you. Alex Brown is a fifth grader, fifth grade student at Manor Elementary School, was nominated by Christian Chmikowski, Amy Unger, and Patty Cropp. They shared that Alex demonstrates his leadership skills by actively participating in classroom discussions and showing a deep understanding of the material. He also takes the initiative to speak with his teachers to better himself, not only as a learner, but as a role model. In AMP class, Alex demonstrates leadership skills by encouraging peers to share their ideas and helping others work through the challenging problems. Alex is also a member of the National Elementary Honor Society at Manor. To receive this high honor, Alex has consistently demonstrated leadership skills throughout his entire elementary school career. He leads by approaching a task as a group instead of just directing others. This year, Alex worked hard to help organize and run Manor's first Lucky Charms breakfast. The proceeds from the fundraiser supported schools in California that were destroyed due to the wildfires. Congratulations, Alex. Okay, now on to this month's winner for the character trait of citizenship. Annie Lee is a first grader, first grade student at Walt Disney Elementary School, and was nominated by Lori Becker. She shared that Annie is always kind to her classmates, ready to lend a hand when someone needs help, and goes out of her way to make everyone feel included. In the classroom, Annie helps tidy up after activities, shares materials, and shows great respect for both her peers and teachers. She brings a spirit of helpfulness and cooperation to everything she does. Annie greets others with a smile, includes everyone in group activities, and always says please and thank you. In class, she is quick to help classmates with supplies or directions, and is always respectful during discussions. Her kindness and leadership make her a role model for her peers. She demonstrates compassion, teamwork, responsibility every day. Annie is a wonderful example of what it means to be a good citizen. Congratulations, Annie.
Emma Latch is a second grade student at Fosington Elementary School and was nominated by Audrey Lamb, Jennifer Dillon, Debbie Helmoth, Terri Sherman, Christina Rehill, Kristen Cahill, and Vinnie DePaola. They shared that Emma consistently demonstrates outstanding citizenship through her daily actions. After every special area class like art, library, or spark, she always stays behind to help clean up, even if the mess isn't hers. She picks up supplies, pushes in chairs, and makes sure the space is neat for the next class. When working in groups, Emma makes sure that everyone has a turn to talk and listens to everyone's ideas. She shows that she cares about our class and school by being responsible, helpful, and respectful. Emma reminds her classmates to walk quietly in the hallways and to follow Paul Pride. She also shows respect to all teachers and staff. Emma takes pride in being part of her school and shows what it means to be a caring and responsible citizen. Congratulations, Emma.
Caleb Manheat is a sixth grade student at William Penn Middle School and was nominated by Emily Carey, Andrea Keely, Erin Federsall, Jonathan Soffer, Rebecca Boyd, Kimberly Schultz, and Don McCormick. They shared that Caleb is a handpicked SOAR leader at William Penn, selected early in the year for consistently demonstrating the core values that SOAR represents. SOAR stands for strive for success, own our actions, act safely, and respond respectfully. As a SOAR leader, Caleb plays an active and meaningful role in both the school and the broader Pensbury community. He collaborates with staff, peers, and other adults to help plan school-wide and community events, all with the goal of making a positive impact. Caleb shows a deep sense of responsibility, respect, and pride in his role, embodying what it means to be a committed and engaged citizen. He consistently demonstrates a strong commitment to promoting positive behavior and fostering a respectful, responsible, and safe school environment. Congratulations, Caleb. Brooke Artakis is a senior at Pensbury School, no longer, I think, but was nominated by Blair Greiner. She shared that as president of the National Art Honor Society, Brooke fully embodies her role. By welcoming new students, encouraging them, and going out of her way to interact with others, Brooke shows qualities that set her apart from the crowd. She displays a constant smile, shares supportive words of encouragement with her peers, and volunteers for any task. She would often stay and help the art department with props and tasks for the district art show and prom. She utilizes every free moment she has to give back to her school community and the program that supports her and her classmates. Brooke has made a tremendous impact at PHS. Congratulations, Brooke. Let's have one more round of applause to congratulate all of our Pensbury LIFT Character Award winners. Good job.
If I may have a moment of your time, as everyone could imagine, there's a lot of working parts in this program and the awards, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank the many people who make these awards a reality. First, the principals, staff at each school that take the time to prepare the nominations over the entire school year. Next, to Jen Neal and her office, and especially Macy for coordinating the nominations and preparing the write-ups for the presentations at the board meetings. Next, the judges who take the time out of their schedule to review and choose the winners. Sometimes, there's 21 nominations that they have to go through. And I just want to mention their names, because they've been with us for a while, and they do a great job. Erin Mullen, Stephen Seifert, Michelle Dice, Kathy Krayak, and I have to say, my two daughters help out. Last but not least, I would like to thank Marion Vince Kachatory for joining us at each meeting to present the awards and celebrate our students' accomplishments. Marion Vince represents the Faith Presbyterian Church of Fairliss Hills, who sponsor the awards. Each month, the church donates four $25 gift certificate cards to the winner. These awards are truly a community effort. I want to sincerely thank everyone for helping us acknowledge our students' achievements. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, guys.
And I would like to thank Mr. Sanderson for all of his efforts with the LIFT Award and throughout the district. Thank you. And congratulations, you all are an inspiration. Next, we have our monthly reports. Dr. Smith, you want to take us away?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. As I mentioned previously, today was our last day of school. Got to swing by a couple of schools and saw the clapouts that take place every year, so I'd like to just thank all of our staff for another great school year, and the students for their work in making sure that Pensbury ended on a very nice note. So we're thankful to everybody for that. So you've seen this slide before. This will change over the summer as we work to continue our areas of focus, but working through improvements in instruction, using use of data, climate and culture, sustainability, and facilities. Tonight, we're going to talk about two things. One is, we're going to give the budget update, and Mr. Birdnik, who is coming in from above, who is with our debate team at Nationals in Iowa, so he is going to be providing that report shortly. But I also want to bring your attention to, under the facilities area, is that when we return in September, we will have our Act 34 hearing. So this is in accordance with state code, we hold a public hearing in connection with the high school project. So on the agenda this evening, the board has asked to approve the advertising of this hearing, and putting everything in place to ensure that we are set for that hearing, which will take place on September 4th. There are specific requirements regarding the advertisement of this hearing, so they will be, they will be starting, and they're laid out in the resolution that's presented this evening. So again, this is a major milestone for the high school project, and I appreciate the board's support in taking us this far. Before we get to the budget presentation, I would just like to acknowledge, on your personnel agenda this evening is the appointment, or my recommendation to appoint Mr. Ryan Kennedy as the new principal of the Walt Disney Elementary School. I believe he's in the audience. Mr. Kennedy went through a long interview process, which we appreciate that, but we had over 25 parents, staff members, and administrators participate in the selection process. A number of other folks participated, either through anecdotal feedback or through a survey instrument that we submitted or opened up to the community. Mr. Kennedy was the number one choice of the committee, and we're very pleased and excited to have him join the Pens, well, he's already here. He's actually, those of you who don't know, he is the assistant principal at Penwood, but we're very excited to have him join the Walt Disney family, and I think he's already got a Disney shirt on, so he's ready to rock. So we're excited. As I mentioned, I sent a note to parents, we'll have a meet and greet as we, before we return to school, for Ryan to meet his community. So with that, again, I just want to welcome Ryan, and we're very excited about that. So before we go to the actual budget presentation, I just want to highlight, so the budget development process, this really takes place throughout the school year with an administrative budget committee, we call it the ABC, to review our expenditures. This is discussed and brought up with the finance committee discussions about where the budget is landing and where we are moving forward in anticipation for the next year. April, you saw a proposed final budget presentation, where you discussed it and voted. This is June, and here is the final budget presentation, and you're asked for your discussion and vote regarding this. So without further ado, I'm going to just switch over to Mr. Birdnik's presentation. And, Mr. Birdnik, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I will just give the little bit of background, and I'll turn it over to you when it gets hard with the numbers. All right, so, our final budget presentation, obviously, our mission statement is important that we recognize all students, all students is underlying there, to ensure that we're doing everything we can to move our students forward and make sure that they are creative, ethical, and critical thinkers for lifelong success in a global society. Some fast facts, again, you've seen this before, we're at 9,606 students, those are students who are attending the district. We obviously have another group of students who attend the tech school, and a number of students who attend out-of-district placements. We transport a small city every day of 9,618 individuals in district, but also to private schools in the area. You see a number of our teachers, 944, 711 support staff, 15 school buildings, and 52 administrators, which actually will be reduced this year. So what makes Pensbury unique, as I talked about earlier, is our traditions. The prom is not something that happens anywhere else, the extent that it happens in Pensbury. So thankful to all those folks with that sports night. Graduation on the Falcon Field was nothing short of amazing. Something we're also very proud of, and how the district was built, all neighborhood elementary schools, this is a situation where, you know, as Mr. Kennedy is coming in as the principal of the Disney Elementary School, he gets to know every student, every family in our schools. That's the benefit of having these manageable neighborhood elementary schools. Class sizes are favorable, we have tons of programs for student success and opportunities for our students. You have to work very hard in Pensbury not to get involved in something, because we truly have something for everything, everyone. Also, a highly experienced teaching staff, something, again, we're very proud of. Something we're proud of is a return on your investment, a high-quality academics. From our NICE rating is A+, or, sorry, A. Outstanding, award-winning arts and music program, so consistently voted best communities for music education, award-winning athletic programs, award-winning business purchasing, transportation, facilities departments. We have 88 competitive athletic programs, and we recently added four, so thank you for the board for that support. Over 100 co-curricular opportunities, long-term planning to address our facility needs, the high school being one of those, but additionally, our work on our other buildings must and will continue. We are competitively ranked in any, by any metric with that, and as I mentioned previously, we have overall ranking in Niche.com of an A. So that's, you know, when we talk about, you know, we don't take school budgets, and we don't take our responsibility lightly, but I think we can all take pride in the work that we're doing and the return on our investment for that. We are providing, I say, an excellent education to our students, tremendous amount of opportunities for them to grow and learn, and branch outside of just academics, but with music and arts, something, again, we can all be proud of. So how do we build a budget? We evaluate all of our existing programs and our staffing, we use district goals and assessment data, enrollment projections. We make adjustments, and we will continue to make adjustments over the years. We know that we'll see enrollment shifts over the next several years for a variety of reasons, but we'll make accommodations with that. This budget does include the reduction of one administrator. We currently, we are continually looking at how we balance our needs with the needs of our students and staff, so we will assess those positions going forward. Allocate dollars for fixed and increasing expenses, it's no secret that our budget really goes to people, our teachers, our teaching staff. About 75% of our budget goes to salaries and benefits for our excellent teachers. But we also look at a line-by-line budget review in our curricular initiatives. We've done presentations at our finance committee through education, through technology, special education, so people could really see what their money is being spent on in a district. And we plan for the future by allocating resources for costly facility maintenance and long-term care of our facilities. All right, so this is where it gets real. Mr. Birdnik, are you ready to take over?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Birdnik is presenting. If I go one thing, I think folks know that Mr. Birdnik will be leaving us after this year, and this is his final budget presentation in the Pensbury School District. So thank you, Mr. Birdnik.
Good evening, Pensbury community. So we begin with where we ended last June, with the adoption of a $253 million budget, focused primarily on instruction. Turning the clock to 25, 26, we have revenues of $262.5 million, including a 4% Act 1 index increase, expenditures of $263.7 million, which is a 3.84% increase, and fund balance utilization of 1.2 million. Now, for 1.2 million, I would point out that 700,000 of that is budgeted continually on spending, CIR cap is really 500,000. In terms of revenue, 74 cents are low. In terms of revenues, 74% are state-funded, 2% federal-funded. On the expenditure side of the equation, 73% of the budget goes to salary and benefits, 4% goes to professional services, 9% goes to other purchase services like tuitions and charter schools, and 7% goes to debt service. Looking at our professional staff, year-to-date, we had 23 resignations, 23 retirements, 46 total on the year, a little bit lower than the prior four years. We, of course, back out resignations and retirements for their value and to make sure we don't overstate salary budget. We had in '24, '25, 15 and 1/2 temporary positions. That includes special education needs, English language development, elementary classrooms due to enrollment, and extra course units for PHS selective areas. We have now reduced from 15.5 positions to 6.5 positions, 2.5 richer temporary and four richer new contracts. We added four full-time equivalent contracts for artistic support teacher, 2 and 1/2 temporary positions for extra course units at the high school in Penwood due to enrollment. The other temporary needs, comp and plates for '24, '25 will be addressed through the reallocation of 12 available FTE contracts due to retirements and resignations. And we have a reduction of one administrative position in the central office. So overall, it's a decrease of 10 positions in the professional staff budget totaling about 1.25 million. If you look at expenditures in terms of what you're spending money on, 64% goes to direct instruction. The benchmark there is 60% you want to hit. Salary and benefits grew from 188.3 million in '24, '25 to 193.4 million in '25, '26. That's $5.1 million growth or 2.72%. Special Education Department, in '24, '25, it was 10.4 million, in '25, '26, it's 12.1 million. That's a growth of 1.7 million or 16.2%. In terms of the Bucks County Intermediate Unit carryover, let me explain what the carryover is. In, you lay out a contract with the intermediate unit for the services you're going to buy. That contract then gets compared to actuals. If there's a difference, whether it's a debit or a credit, that carries over into the next year. In '25, '26, they changed the business practice, so we will actually have the impact of two years of carryover heading our budget. That's a, that's a growth of 2.1 million or 332% increase. Debt Service, the '25, '26 budget pays $2 million of debt service from the debt service fund, so our debt service budget is relatively flat, just a growth of 0.39%. Specialized Transportation, just like the rest of our special education budget is expanding, we have a growth of $690,000 at 24.56%. Bucks County Technical High School, we have growth of 400,000 or 6.77%. Charter Schools, we have growth of 400,000 or 6.3%. Natural Gas and Electricity, we have growth of 392,000 or 20.8%. Technology Department, even were able to lock in some contracts for some devices early, so they got, we could have had from tariffs, is some avoided, but growth is 170,000 or 4.7%. Everything else in the budget was decreased from 15.7 million to 14.4 million. That's a decrease of 1.33 million or 8.47% decrease. Our next steps are to continue to review staffing. Staffing review is an ongoing process. Where we can take a big, see, ongoing capital borrowing. We will be back to you in August with a premise resolution for capital borrowing after we get our auto-repool for '24, '25. And then, of course, we close with our mission statement, that we're going to prepare all students to become creative, ethical, and critical thinkers for lifelong success in a global society. And that's the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Birdnick, and I'd like to acknowledge that right now you are helping some of our students in the national debate in Iowa, and we really appreciate all that you do and have done for our debate team. It's just been phenomenal.
Thank you.
So that concludes my presentation and Mr. Birdnick's presentation. I would just like to acknowledge, Mr. Birdnick, as this is his last public board meeting, and appreciate, and share my appreciation for him, all the work he's done. He's laid an excellent foundation for us to move forward with the high school project. I sincerely, sincerely has valued his friendship and working with him over the past few years since I've been here. He's been a tremendous resource, and really, as you talk about business administrators, he does more than just manage the business of the district, oversees facilities, oversees transportation, but has a special connection with the students in the debate team. And I think, Chris, is Zacky with you there, too?
Zacky is, and we're waiting anxiously. Zacky, he broke to the quarterfinals of congressional debate. We're waiting anxiously to find out the results to see if he advances to the semifinal round.
Excellent. Those of you who don't know, that's Zacky, who's our school board rep, former school board rep, I guess now, is out there with Mr. Birdnick also. Do you want to give a quick report on anybody else?
Yes, Swathy has competed today in the semifinals of the Senate. We're waiting to see if she advances to the final round. We had a sophomore, Rishi Valadurthy, who advanced to the round of 32 in big questions. We have a number of students competing in supplemental events. We know some results from supplemental events. We had three students advance to elimination rounds in extempore amuse debate. We're waiting for the results of the others. So so far, it's been a really good tournament for Pensbury.[1056.66][1056.66][applause]
I'd like to add my thanks for all the guidance that you've brought to the district and getting us set up with our 20-year plan and really getting our facilities back on track. I know that that was a monumental undertaking when you came into the district, and you did an admirable job, so thank you.[1083.41][1083.41][applause] So we'll move on to our board committee reports. The first is, Mr. Taylor, do you have a Bucks County Technical High School joint board report?
I do. We had a very brief meeting, so I'll just touch on some of the highlights. Bucks County Technical High School had their graduation, the same that we had over at the Cure Bank Arena. The budget is officially passed. Every sending district but one has voted, which has resulted in that being passed. We hired a new culinary teacher, who has very big shoes to fill. We look forward to meeting him. And we approved Dr. Bowman from the Chaminie as our superintendent of record for the current year. Dr. Smith had done a two-year stint. This will be Dr. Bowman's second year as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Waldorf, do you have a Bucks County Intermediate Union?
Yes, Dr. Stier, I do. Bucks County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met last night on June 17th. Prior to the meeting, we met in executive session for the annual safety and security report. During the meeting, we elected John D'Angelo of Bristol Borough School District as president for next, for the next year, and Ron Jackson, Quakertown School District, as our vice president. The majority of our meeting was honoring the 22 retirees. So that was a big part. We had two mini reports, one on the year-end celebrations, and then the services provided by Bucks County Intermediate Unit to each school district was a handout. And the Bucks County Intermediate Unit provided ongoing support for Pensbury for multi-tiered systems of support implementation, school-wide positive behavior interventions and supports implementation, instructional coaching, and paraprofessional trainings. The Bucks County Intermediate also provided support for gifted programming and English language development programming. They led a focused inquiry on K-12 reading programs. Pensbury's comprehensive plan will be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education by, they're helping us to do that for March 31st, 2026. And Bucks County Intermediate staff provided a board governance retreat and is going to be helping us facilitate the chief financial officer search. So just wanted the community to know what the Bucks County Intermediate does for our school district. And all of the handouts from our meeting can be found in board docs under the finance committee section. That concludes my report.
Thank you. One other thing they're going to help us with this summer is our board self-evaluation. So just to give everybody a heads up, that's coming. Our next report, Mrs. Lamming, do you have an education committee report?
Oh, do I. We have, we have met twice since our last action committee meeting. We met first on May 22nd, and on the agenda, the following items are for your consideration this evening. Item A is the Proposed Penwood Targeted School Improvement Plan. Mr. Majikis, principal of Penwood Middle School, and Dr. Aldridge, director of accountability, assessment, and data, presented the TSI plan for Penwood Middle School. The plan is mandated by PDE due to performance of English language learners in ELA, math, and attendance. The plan has been developed collaboratively by school leadership, staff, and community stakeholders, and includes evidence-based interventions, progress monitoring tools, and a timeline for implementation and review to support all Penwood Middle School students. The committee, however, is requesting that this item be tabled until August for posting. Per PDE guidelines, the plan must be approved by September 1st, 2025. Item B is the Boys Bowling National Tournament, a request for the team to participate in the tournament in Fort Wayne, Indiana. Item C is the International Thespian Festival, three students and a chaperone to attend the festival in Bloomington, Indiana. Item D is the PA Summit for Educational Leaders. Two district administrators are requesting approval to attend the PA Summit for Leaders in State College. Item E, need, the National Energy Education Development Youth Energy Conference and Awards. This is an annual request for 50 Afton students to attend the National Energy Education Development Conference and Awards Ceremony in Washington, DC. Item F is the IXL Math. IXL Math is proposed to replace Math Seeds as a supplemental program to be utilized in K and 1. IXL Math is currently used in grades 2 through 8. Item G is Math 180. The Special Services Department is requesting the purchase of Math 180 to be utilized district-wide in this coming school year. Item H is Achieve 3000 Renewal, request to approve the renewal of the Achieve 3000 Literacy Program for the elementary, middle, and high school levels for the '25, '26 school year. Item I is Every Way Renewal. This is a request to approve the renewal of Evergreen subscription for News2U, SymbolSticks Prime, L3 Skills, and Unique Learning System for the '25, '26 school year to be utilized by students who require specialized programming. Item J is our Alex Subscription. This is a request for the renewal of the Alex Subscription to support mathematics instruction for students with specially-designed instructional needs. Item K is our Newzella ELA. The request is to improve the renewal of the program for the '25, '26 school year to be utilized in the reading programming at the secondary level. Item L, Everyday Speech, a request to approve the purchase of 14 site licenses for everyday speech for use in all the district buildings during the '25, '26 school year. Item M is Lexia, a request for the board to approve the renewal quote from Lexia Learning Systems for 670 student subscriptions to the Lexia Core 5 reading and Power Up Literacy Programs to be utilized district-wide. Item N is Mystery Science, a request for the board to approve the renewal of the district-wide Mystery Science membership for all 10 elementary schools for the '25, '26, and '26, '27 school years. Item O is a request, is TCI, a request for the board to approve a one-year renewal of 1,750 TCI student licenses and 170 TCI teacher licenses for elementary social studies instruction during the '25, '26 school year. Item P, Scholastic Magazines, a request for the board to approve purchase of Scholastic magazines for the '25, '26 school year, including storyworks for 4th and 5th grades, upfront scope and action magazines for all three middle schools to supplement the Reala instruction. Item Q is our Delta Education FOS Next Generation Subscription Model, a request for the renewal of the Delta Education FOS Next Generation Model for grades K to 5, science, published by Delta Education. These science kits support all science instruction and are aligned to the next-generation science standards as well as the STEELs standards. Item R is our AP Environmental Science. This is a request to approve the adoption of online achievement, online achieve, sorry, online achieve for environmental science course and AP Environmental Science textbook for the AP Environmental Course at the high school level. This is one of the new mandated programs. Not mandated, but available programs. Item S is AP Physics Mastering Codes, a request to approve modified Mastering Physics Principles with Applications AP Edition. Item T is Conceptual Physics, a request to approve the purchase of Conceptual Physics 13th High School Edition Modified Mastering Physics with Pearson eText, six-year subscription to be utilized in the academic-level courses at Pensbury High School. Item U is our Therapy Dog Training, a request to continue work with AIR Therapy Dogs to provide therapy dog training in the district throughout the '25, '26 school year. Item V is the Valley Day School Extended School Year Services, a request to approve the contracts for four students with complex needs to attend extended school year program at Valley Day for 2025. Items W and X are waiver agreement, which are two requests to approve the waiver agreements from two students. That brings us to our June 17th meeting, which was yesterday. Dr. Bloom and Ms. Worthington shared a presentation regarding the updated life skills curriculum to benefit students in the Life Skills Support Program. On the agenda tonight from yesterday's meeting are items Y, decodable readers and a class craft package, a proposal to purchase decodable readers in grades K, 1, and 2 to support the structured literacy instruction at our primary levels. Item Z is the Global Q Interactive Annual Digital Membership. This testing system is used by our school psychologist to administer, score, and report on 20 different clinical assessments. Item AA is our HMH Intro to Reading Professional Development, which is a proposal for professional development for elementary teachers to strengthen writing instruction district-wide. Item BB is the HMH Read 180 Renewal and Professional Development. Renewal of this reading software package is used at all schools district-wide in our special education programs. Item CC is the I-Lit EL Curriculum, a digital curriculum resource designed for English language learners at the middle and high school levels. Item DD is our PA Summit for Educational Leaders. This is two administrators to attend the professional development conference in State College. In total, four administrators will be attending that conference. Item EE, Project Lead the Way Renewal for Spark, is a request to approve the annual registration cost for STEM programming at our elementary level. Item FF is the Bucks County IU Agreement and Estimated Program Cost for the '25, '26 school year. This proposed agreement with the IU is to provide special education services in the coming school year. Item GG is the Lakeside Counseling Agreement. This agreement will provide PHS, the high school, with a therapeutic counselor to meet the needs of students with IEPs. Item HH is a psychiatric consultation agreement with Dr. Shawna Brent. It's a renewal. Dr. Brent provides consultation services on an as-needed basis to respond to students' needs of students, to respond to the needs of students with special needs. Item II is our Psychology Internship Contracts. This proposal will allow Pensbury to partner with Temple University to provide two psychology interns in the district for the '25, '26 school year. Item JJ is also a psychology internship, internship contract, which will allow Pensbury to partner with our Rider University to provide one psychology intern in the district. Items KK and LL are settlement and release agreements for students with special needs. That includes my report. We will not have another education committee meeting until August. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mrs. Powsky, do you have a Facilities Committee report?
Yes, yes, ma'am. The Facilities Committee met Thursday, June 5th in the Folsington Cafeteria. CHA Dewey Consulting provided a capital projects update, presented a presentation which included an update of the Charles Bay Middle School renovations, high school stadium concession buildings, Pensbury High Stadium second synthetic turf field project, administration server room upgrade project, the 2025 security camera project, Pensbury High School East roof repairs, and the Charles Bay Pedestrian Bridge. CHA reported that Phase 5 of the Charles Bay project, the auditorium renovation work continues. Demolition began on June 4th as scheduled, and all construction activities have been coordinated. The stadium concession buildings continue to await the growth of final grass seeding before the permit can be closed out. The second synthetic turf field earthwork has been ongoing, and the installation of the underground Stormwater Basin is slated to be completed by June 6th. Project final completion is still slated for August of 2025. CHA noted that the server room equipment is in hand except the emergency generator, and that the new server racks are ready to be installed. The 2025 security camera projects are underway with work scheduled to start in June after the school year. Pensbury High School East roof repairs are scheduled to begin as well after June 18th. The repair of the Charles Bay Middle School pedestrian bridge will be bid in mid-July with an anticipated completion date of November 1st. Mr. Steele provided an update on the Corey Hill Playground Project. The site survey has been completed, and the drawings for bid purposes will be ready around June 18th. And I'd like to add, that project is totally funded by the Corey Hill PTO. Mr. Strohacker of KCBA Architects provided updates on multiple meetings with Pensbury Art Music Theater Departments, the status of the construction documentation phase, the outcome of a preliminary meeting with PICO on the location of the new electrical service, and the first food service layout of the new high school building, which will be discussed with the district's food service provider. Action items 6A and 6B will be sent to the board for consideration and approval. The next meeting is August 7th at 5:00 PM in the Falls Cafeteria. If I may, Dr. Steele, in addition to that report, I have one other bit of information. At the last committee meeting, there was a public comment by a community member with concerns about the emotional support programs we have in place for students. As you know, I chair the Wellness Committee, and this year, our Wellness Committee spent time sharing about a variety of proactive resources and supports we have available for students at all levels. Ms. Patty Strekel, supervisor of school counseling, joined us earlier this year to talk about all of the services that are available to support students in our district. At the elementary level, our school counselors work with students both at the individual and small group level to build social skills, promote responsibility, and emotional regulation, as well as work through difficult issues like coping with grief and dealing with change. Our social workers and counselors also work with various outside agencies to provide critical support for students, including Nova, Family Based Services, Big Brother, Big Sister, and many more. At the secondary level, counselors work with students individually and in groups on grief, anxiety, and other issues that impact them daily. We have mental health support available from outside providers that we contract with in addition to our social workers who work with students and families to coordinate outside support. On top of this, our counselors are always available to assist students with more typical school issues like college and career planning, but they are a critical resource for our student needs. I hope that informs the public of what we do do on a daily basis for our emotional needs of our students. Thank you, Dr. Steele.
Thank you, Mrs. Powsky. Next, we'll go back to Mr. Waldorf, DVA Finance and Partnership Committee report, another long one.
I do. So the committee met on June 16th. There were three informational items. Jean Gearing presented a 25, 20, 25, 26 budget update and a capital budget review, as well as a real estate control report showing continued growth in all Pensbury municipalities. The five-site report of the month was on delinquent taxes, which finds that Pensbury is towards the bottom of the 13th school districts in Bucks County. For your consideration tonight, 7A, approval of financials, 7B, approval of bills pending, 7C, instrument donation, move to accept with appreciation the donation of one three-quarter violin to Charles Bay Middle School from Deepak Sharma. 7D, instrument donation, move to accept with appreciation the donation of one strobe 15-inch viola from Sherry Estrada. 7E, 2025, 26 final budget for general fund approval, move that the proposed final budget of the school district for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year on Form PDE 2028 be adopted as the full budget, final budget for the school district general fund in the amount of $263,202,167. 7F, 2025, 2026 tax resolution, move to approve the real estate tax resolution for the fiscal year 2025, 26, reflecting a mileage rate of 204.003 as presented, and this is a 4% increase, tax increase. 7G, 2025, 26 Homestead/Farmstead Exclusion Resolution, move to approve the Farmstead/Farmstead Exclusion Resolution for fiscal year 2025, 26. 7H, 2025, 2026 Senior Tax Rebate, move to approve the Pensbury School District Senior Property Tax Rebate Program for the 25, 26 school year. 7I, Board Secretary Appointment, move to appoint Chris Bernick, Secretary of the Board of School Directors of Pensbury School District for the term commencing July 1st, 2025 to end on August 19th, 2025. 7J, Lower Mayfield Township Tax Exemption, move to approve the tax-exempt application of a parcel owned by Lower Mayfield Township commencing January 1st, 2026 to be applicable to the 2025 tax year. This amount is, from what I understand, is less than $100, in regard to the tax. 7K, Rothman Orthopedics Agreement, move to approve the agreement with Rothman Orthopedics to provide sports medicine physician coverage for the 25, 26 school year. 7L, Thrive Alliance Group, move to approve payment of amount of $35,000 to the Thrive Alliance Group with the use of the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Grant Funds, which will be used to cover the cost of professional development training for Pensbury School Counselors and social workers in the area of trauma-informed care. 7M, move to approve the ambulance service agreement with Levitt Town Falls Fairless Hills Rescue Squad to provide free standby ambulance services for one district event and a charge of $300 for each additional event effective July 1st, 2025. 7N, move to approve the individual memorandums of understanding between the district and the Tullytown Borough Police Department, the Falls Township Police Department, the Yardley Borough Police Department, and the Lower Mayfield Police Department. This is required by PA statute every two years. 7O is to move to approve an agreement with Dr. Stephen Dannen, effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, to provide the district with student dental exams at an hourly rate of $90 per hour. 7P, move to approve annual renewal of Naviance, access to Naviance College and Career Planning and College Application Management Software in an amount of $48,500. 7Q, move to approve six banks as depositories for all investments and uninvested funds of the Pensbury School District. 7R, budget transfers, move to authorize the Board Secretary and Business Administrator to make necessary budget transfers within and between accounts without exceeding the total appropriation for the 24, 25 school year. 7S, committed fund balance categories, move to approve that any and all the following be classified under committed fund balance categories, fund balance appropriation, future budgets, Peasars employer contribution contingency, self-insurance contingency, capital projects, and debt service. 7T, move to approve Board Treasurer to be authorized to develop an investment schedule and invest available funds in certificates of deposit or other investments in compliance with Pennsylvania School Code for the school year 25, 26. 7U, move to approve the Board Treasurer and Business Administrator be authorized to make payments of 2024, 25, and 25, 26 bills that require a payment on or before the next scheduled regular meeting of the board, and that the record of such payment be submitted for formal approval at the next regular meeting. 7V, move to approve the Financial Services Office be authorized to electronically transfer funds from any school district account to any other school district account as required. 7W, move to approve the Business Administrator designated be authorized to close the 24, 25 books as of June 30th, 2025, directs the school Business Administrator or designee to proceed with the conducting of necessary audit for the fiscal year 24, 25, and authorize the Business Administrator or designee to transfer 24, 25 fiscal year surplus to fund balance accounts. 7X, move to approve the Lower Mayfield Township informational flyer to be included with the school tax bills and no cost to the district. 7Y, move to approve the Services of Interstate Tax Service Bureau for unemployment compensation control services for the 24, 25, 26 school year. 7Z, move to approve the renewal of the United Group Programs as the district's third-party administrator of Section 125 planned for the 25, 26 school year. 7AA, move to approve the agreement to participate in the school-based access program for fiscal year 25, 26. 7BB, move to approve the renewal of medical and pharmaceutical insurance with IBX. 7CC, move to approve the renewal of CAMI, PDF editor and digital annotation tool at a cost not to exceed $29,430. 7DD, move to approve the renewal of several power school systems at a cost not to exceed 7EE, move to approve the purchase of Cyber Nut for cybersecurity training to help prevent phishing attacks and data breaches at a cost not to exceed $26,600. 7FF, move to approve the agreement with Bucks County Intermediate Unit to provide legal advice and opinions concerning technology-related policies and other related services for the 25, 26 year at a cost not to exceed $880. 7GG, move to approve the renewal of Follett, which is a library cataloging system to manage digital and print media, reducing acquisition duplication and maximizing resource usage at a cost not to exceed $18,538.20. 7HH, move the board approve the recycling and certified data destruction of outdated technology by Sycamore Sustainable Electronics Recycling. 7II, move to approve the renewal of APC Echo Structure and VM Ware for maintenance contracts for servers and backups to ensure uptime, disaster recovery, and safeguards against data loss costs. And I didn't catch, I deleted the what not, the cost not to exceed, but I'm sure that's in the document there. 7JJ, move to approve contracts for first aid nursing supplies to seven vendors in the amount of $14,397.19. 7KK, move to approve the payment of the amount of $6,400 for Critical Response Group for its annual implementation and maintenance subscriptions effective September 2025 through August 2026. 7LL, move to approve the agreement with Christopher Allen, Alan, excuse me, effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, to provide the district with contracted medical services at a rate of $22,500 for the school year. 7MM through 7RR, memorandums of understanding to provide private schools within our catchment area with school health services. Move to approve memorandums of understanding between Pensbury School Districts and Abrams Hebrew Academy, Calvary Christian School, New Hope Academy, Penrin School, St. Ignatius School, and Valley Day School regarding school health services for a period of, from August 25th, 2025 to June 18th, 2026. 7SS is a resolution, reimbursement resolution, move to approve adoption of reimbursement resolution for the 2025 bond issue. 7TT, move to approve service agreement with Brightly Software, formerly, is it called School Dude, which was for district-wide work order and facility usage program for the amount of $47,950.10 from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. 7UU, move to approve the proposal from David Blackmore and Associates dated May 29th, 2025, to provide environmental consulting services for environmental soil sampling and analysis for the new Pensbury High School at a cost not to exceed $8,750. 7VV, move to approve development agreements with Falls Township for construction of the second turf field and the new Pensbury High School. 7WW, move to approve four buses to be placed for sale on municipal bid. 7XX, move to approve the contract with Roar Bus Company for 678 passenger buses at $145,973 each and 130 passenger bus for $99,325 for a grand total of $975,163. 7YY, move to, that the board approve filing of six real estate appeals in accordance with Board Policy 605.1. And that concludes my report. I hope everyone is still awake.
Thank you. Dr. Delwisch, do you have a policy and personnel report?
Yes. The Policy and Personnel Committee met on June 16th earlier this week at 4:30 PM, during which time the board went into executive session to discuss administrative hiring and administrative review. Tonight, we do not have any action items under policy. Under personnel, items 9A and B are recommended for approval by administration for professional and classified items, including the appointment of Ryan Kennedy as the new principal at Walt Disney Elementary. The committee recommends items 9C through F be considered for approval by the board. Item 9C would approve the B-Check Volunteer Tracking Software Contract that will allow the district to maintain its existing clearance tracking system for employees, volunteers, and third-party contractors without any interruption in service. Item 9D would approve an MOU with PESPA to expand Item 9D would approve an MOU with PASPA to expand upon an existing MOU to allow selected full-time roles to have flexibility for start and end times based on operational needs and assigned work responsibilities while maintaining a fixed number of hours per week. Item 9E will enable Bucks IU to assist the district in conducting a comprehensive and effective search for a new CFO. Item 9F will approve a contract agreement with PASPA that will allow the district to secure an experienced interim business administrator to provide temporary management of the school's district business and financial operations during our search for the new CFO. There will be no Policy and Personnel Committee meeting in July. The next meeting is scheduled for August 14th. That concludes my report.
Mrs. Polsky, we didn't have a Wellness Committee meeting, so you do not have a report. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the next meeting will be in August. Before we move on to public comment, I do have a couple of things that have been brought up in public comment previously that I'd like to address, one of which is the payment of loans for the renovation of West in the early 2000s. We are making the final payment on that in August of this year, and the building will be paid off. The next is the issue of maintenance. So several commenters have questioned our maintenance of the buildings and the need for building a new high school when the current high schools have maintenance issues. So the reality of the situation is that for four years in the early 2010s, no taxes were raised for consecutive years in a row. That resulted in a budget cut for the district for four years in a row. And the thing that got cut from that budget the most is maintenance. So as you know, we have 10 elementary schools. We have three middle schools. We have a high school campus that has five schools. That's 18 buildings. Then you add in the warehouse and the administration building and the bus garage. That's more than 20 buildings that we need to maintain. And anyone who owns a home knows that if you put off needed maintenance, you're going to pay a higher price down the road. So for four years, we put off maintenance on over 20 buildings. That was not this board. That was a different board. This board is still cleaning up the results of those actions. The new high school is needed, and we are going to be continuing our efforts by addressing that with the Act 34 motion tonight. The final comment that I'd like to make in response to previous public comments, a number of community members have suggested that we save up the money to build the high school before we build it. If we start to save money now and put it in a capital reserve fund, it will take us decades to save up the hundreds of millions of dollars it would take to build a building. In that time, the cost to build a building will continue to increase. It's not a feasible way to build a high school, just as it is not a feasible way for most Americans to build a home. So we are building a new educational home for our high school students and our staff, and we're doing it in the most responsible way that we can. So given those responses to previous public comments, I'd like to move on to your public comment next. As I stated at the beginning, this is your time to directly address the Board uninterrupted by the Board, the administration, or the audience. Up to 90 minutes are provided as an opportunity for community stakeholders and others to comment on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers should have signed up on the appropriate sign-up sheets. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the Board. If you are speaking, please state your name and your municipality to begin, and if you are commenting on behalf of a company or organization, please state the name of the organization and that you are speaking on their behalf. Speakers may not cede their five minutes to other peoples. We, I will call each speaker to the microphone in the order in which they have signed in. Please note that the Board will neither answer questions during your public, period of public comment, nor engage in any dialogue. This ensures that you receive your entire five minutes of public comment and that the meeting proceeds in an orderly fashion. Your questions and comments will be taken into consideration by the Board and may be addressed at a future time. It is our expectation that individuals will not be interrupted by others in the audience during their five-minute period. We ask that meeting attendees respect each other's time for public comment and not interrupt in any manner. I am now opening public comment at 9:03 PM. The first speaker is Andrew Dell.
Andrew Dell, candidate, excuse me, candidate for School Board Director, Falls Township. First, I'd like to disagree with everything Mrs. Steer just said, or I'm sorry, Dr. Steer. You know, it's easy to blame the last administration or last people that were here, but the fact of the matter is you have a bloated administration. You have three assistant superintendents. You spend money like it's going out of style, like it's never going to end. So take responsibility for your lack of maintenance because it's all your fault. It's not the last place, it's not the last administration's fault. Secondly, you don't need a new school. Case in point is, and thank you, Mr. Dr. Smith, for sending me the emails on the stadium project, but we weren't told, I look back in the meetings, I looked in the paper, I look in Levittown now, we weren't told that this stadium was going to go from 4.1 million to over $20 million. It said it was be done in phases, but the original is 4.2 million, I believe, for the stadium. Now we're sitting here across a $20 million marker for a stadium. Now, you're telling us it's going to cost us $268 million, $269 million for the school. Which phase is that? Is that Phase 1 of six phases or eight phases? You guys are very sneaky in the way your guys are putting these things across the board. The stadium never once did I hear it mentioned being $20 million, not once, and it's still not done. And the fact that you feel that you need some sort of astroturf field, what's wrong with grass and dirt? You could buy the equipment to reseed and renovate that lawn after every, every event that happens there that might tear up the turf. You could have it irrigated, you could put an irrigation system in, but no, you guys have to, have to have the latest and greatest. You're spending money that you do not have. Next thing is Chris Burdick, great guy. Everyone up here saying what a great guy he is. Well, if he's so great, why is he leaving this district and going to another one to take a pay cut? What's being asked of Mr. Burdick that he doesn't want to do? Why is he leaving? Everybody knows they leave a job to make less money, right? That's what you all do. You aspire to make less money and travel further to work. So how are you going to replace Mr. Burdick? A guy who's out in Iowa with a debate team, loves these kids, does a great job. You're not going to replace him. He's irreplaceable. But there's a reason, which we'll never hear the truth because you can't get the truth out of you people. If you put you on a rack and twisted it, you'll never get the truth from you guys. But the fact of the matter is you had a great guy, and now he's flying off to another district to make less money. Makes no sense to me, but nonetheless, that is what it is. Thirdly, security here. Walk through a metal detector. Everybody walks in the metal detector. What if someone actually pulls a gun out that comes through that door? What do you expect that's going to happen when you have security guards out here? Nobody has a gun on. Nobody has less than lethal force out here. Anyone can waltz in here and start spraying this place down, and you're asking your security guys to be the recipient of all the bullets? They can't stop anyone that comes through those doors with a gun, so that metal detector is absolutely worthless because someone actually does have a gun on that comes in here. These guys can't stop them. Whether it's here, now, the only good news is here, you have the Falls Township Police show up towards the beginning of these meetings, and then they leave at the end of the meetings, but they're not here the whole time, and they're also not at the schools the whole time. So I would recommend that you arm some of your prior police officers, ex-military guys, or even some of your teachers that will be willing to carry a gun or be trained to have a gun in school, because anyone can waltz through these schools, and you don't have to be trained or technically advanced to walk through that door with a gun and kill somebody. The metal detector is a joke. The other, the other question I have is, why have you guys directed the security people not to talk to me and any of my cohorts? Is there some reason that they're not allowed to talk to us? Because I've known a lot of these guys for 25 to 30 years, and you people are not going to sit here and tell me who I'm going to talk to. I'm going to make that very clear to you. So have a nice night.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. The next speaker is Sophia Ruditis.
Hi, it's Sophia Ruditis. It was close, though. I am a student at Pennwood. I hope you guys have come to Newsies and seen our performance, but we are going to have something, we're not going to have something next year if you guys move our music teacher, Mrs. Johnson, Ms. Johnson, to an elementary school to teach band or orchestra. First of all, our play was a wonderful experience, and we really enjoyed it, and without Ms. Johnson, our play is in jeopardy for next year, knowing the music teacher, the other music teacher, does not do school plays. Also, how can you say that we're the best at arts and in music industry when we don't even have plays? And at my elementary school, at Under Roosevelt, we didn't have a stage there, and we couldn't do plays, so the real, like, kids are really looking forward to, I know I definitely was, to getting to be part of that big production. We got, like, so many seats, a giant stage, and everybody is so warm and welcoming into the play, and it's just really awesome being a part of that, and I can't, I would hate to see Ms. Johnson leave that. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very brave. Thank you for coming up and sharing your concerns with us. You did a fabulous job. Thank you. Next, I think it's Michael Ruditis?
Michelle.
Oh, Michelle.
Surprise, I'm her mom. Michelle Ruditis, Falls Township. So first, I want to thank you for your service and thank you for being here tonight, and also thank you to Mr. Kennedy. I did not know he was leaving. Will be very sad to have him gone from Pennwood, but congratulations on the new position. Walt Disney is very lucky. My daughter was going to talk about the second point, so I will talk for her. I don't know about you, but when my, when I was a child and I complained about walking to school, the saying back then was, "Well, I walked a mile uphill both ways in the snow." And that was supposed to shock and awe us. How dare you walk a mile to school? We bought our house in the district three and a half years ago, and one of the selling points was, oh, the school bus pickup is right across the street. What I did not know is that it was only the elementary school pickup, and we are 1.2 miles from the middle school, and there is no bus for the middle school. I was one or the parent last year who petitioned the Kids Care Organization to have the aftercare program for the middle school for the first time ever, and while it was not perfect, it was a safe place for my daughter to be after school as a single working parent. Knowing that she had a place to go where she was safe was very important to me. Also, after moving into our house three and a half years ago, about three months after moving in, we were walking out the door to go to our elementary school, and we were surprised to see six unmarked police car in front of our house, come to find out that our direct next-door neighbor was a convicted pedophile and was busted in an online sting operation and arrested again. I had no idea that that was the case. So since then, I have become a fan of the Megan's Law website. Within one mile of my house and one mile of Pennwood, there are four registered offenders in our area. Within three miles, because that's the next distance you can search, there are 32 in our area. With the change in school times for the middle school next year, which I think is good for us because the morning works better, I can actually drop her off at school, but there will be a two-and-a-half-hour gap between my getting home from work and her leaving school. And she has a 1.2-mile walk, which we tested it, took her 30 minutes. She has a, what, 20-pound or to her, 100-pound backpack, and she is one of the shortest kids at her school. So it's a pretty far walk, so I'm just, I'm basically here to besiege the school district to consider implementing buses to our neighborhood within the 1.2-mile distance. I was home one day last week, and there are two buses that go down my street. One, I think, picks up one child to go to the private school that I heard you talking about earlier, and then another bus, had to be a middle school bus, comes down our street because it was after the high school and way before the elementary school. So if there's anything we can do to get a bus, there are other kids in our neighborhood. We don't really know a lot of them, but if there's anything we can do, it'd be really appreciated. So thank you.
Next is Tim Daly.
Tim Daly, Lower Mayfield Township. Tonight marks my final planned public comment at a Pensbury School Board Action Meeting. I walked into this room for the first time in October 2020, not for politics, not for attention, but for one purpose, to get our schools reopened for my daughter and her classmates. What I didn't expect was the toxic dysfunction I would witness. Retaliation, arrogance, and an utter disregard for accountability from the Board and its administrators. I kept coming back, not because I wanted to, but because I had to, because I refused to stand by idly and watch you hurt my daughter and her friends. And now I look back with clarity. Would I have taken a different path? Not a chance. My daughter has now graduated with honors and is headed to the University of Florida, one of the top business schools in the country. So no, I regret nothing. I would fight for her all over again. I would not change one action or one remark I've made. I would stand proudly behind every action I took and against you and every harsh email that I sent to you. But I'm not leaving quietly. I will continue tying up the loose ends around outstanding legal matters and RTK requests because the public deserves the truth. Let me alert to the community that this district is currently engaged in two baseless legal battles in Bucks County Police Court to bury records that belong to the people of this community. You've authorized Ms. Aronson and her law firm to burn through 10,000, tens of thousands of dollars just to keep five-year-old emails from Deborah Walker's hidden and to suppress a video of Janine Hellwisch's husband's unauthorized entry into the administration building this past January. If those records are harmless and they reveal nothing, then you wouldn't be trying this hard to keep them in the dark from the public. Robert and Abrams and I will not be backing down, and we will see it through. And judging by the laughable legal arguments by your, by your lawyer here, who doesn't even understand what a statutory appeal is, you know, basically, you guys should start preparing for a significant loss. And based on the statements of financial interest from your, that show how deeply your, and personal debt your lawyer, Ms. Aronson, is, please make sure that you're monitoring that her malpractice insurance premiums have been paid up. I also won't sit silent as you push forward towards your grand fantasy of a grand, brand-new high school, a fantasy built on deception. We have the emails from Chris Burdick confirming two years ago that a referendum would be needed. Burdick has confirmed to a reporter, Peg Kwan, who is here tonight, that Pensbury's debt capacity is at $304 million. I will venture to guess that at least five or six of the board members sitting in front of me tonight had no clue what that number was until Peg Kwan published it at her news organization. You do not have the money to do this without gutting the district's future and dragging You do not have the money to do this without gutting the district's future and dragging Pensbury's credit rating into junk bond territory. Falls Township is already circling the drain towards insolvency, as the Courier-Times just reported earlier this week. And despite this news about Falls Township, you plan to charge forward into an Act 34 hearing this fall, leading the public carefully staged half-truths while hoping no one is doing the math. You will get 75% through this construction build, and then you will shrug your shoulders and say, "Oops, we're out of funds." That's not just negligence. Most people in this community, for who I come here to speak for, at these meetings, would consider that fraud. Let tonight's service notice to all of you on this board that if you vote in support of the resolution, you own it. If, wait, excuse me, when costs explode, like they have at Bham and Stadium Project under Ms. Powsky's oversight, don't pretend you weren't warned in a public forum repeatedly. You have refused to seek third-party opinions on these ridiculous cost forecasts that are 20% below any actual or estimated municipal building project that has been planned in the past three years here in Bucks and Montgomery Counties. You have dodged transparency. You've even avoided obtaining a Moody's report. That recklessness won't just stain your reputations, but it may cost you personally. You can and will be held personally liable. You can and will be subject to surcharge if you dismiss our warnings. So cash your vote tonight to move forward at your own risk and peril. But know this: the path that you're taking leads this community straight to a financial crisis for which each of you that votes yea will be held accountable. And when 2029 arrives and this district is out of money and it's out of options, your names, these members of the people on the board who vote yes tonight, you will be remembered amongst our community in infamy. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Next speaker is Mr. Abrams.
Robert Abrams, Lower Mayfield Township. Act 34, this is from AI. Act 34 requires public hearings for major construction projects, ensuring community engagement, transparency in the process. You haven't held a hearing since November, when you didn't record the public's issues. Action item number 10A: motion the board authorize maximum project cost of $269,546, $944, and a maximum building construction cost of $212,409,380 for the proposed Pensbury High School project. That tells me, with the use of the word "and," that the project now is $481,956, no, I'm sorry, $481,956,324. Before I leave here tonight, I need to know if I am right or the total project cost is $269,546,944, which is what you've been telling the community was the total cost of the project. Now, apparently, this is just like the Fields at $4.2 million, that with the $3.5 million you want for next year brings it $21.5 million, and you have not spent 50 cents on the education of these kids to catch them up from COVID. Shame on all of you, and every last one of you ought to resign. Absolutely disgusting, and everybody in this community. Now, there's other issues with these numbers that you haven't addressed. Abington had a 12.5% inflation factor for one-half of their project that was approved. Pensbury used to have $4.5 million when Dewey did the first one. Now that 4.5% inflation factor just disappeared, so we're not having any more inflation over the next five years to build this building. Not possible. You got a 10% tariff. You're lowballing the same garbage that you did with the Fields. You're disenfranchising the public, you're deceiving them, and you're defrauding them. This is not habit, this is commonplace at Pensbury. This is not something you can break, this is something you do. Mr. Daly and I both, you don't have enough money to feel, to borrow into this project. It's very simple. If this project is $482 million and you only have $304 to borrow, where are you going to get the other 100 million from? Like we told you, Mr. Daly and I, both told you right up front, a year and a half ago, that you didn't have the money for this, and you don't. And the only way you can do it is to lowball it. Is to lowball it, cut costs, and deceive and defraud the public. That's all you can do. So let's get to the Act 34 hearing, because like Mr. Daly said, the other four projects all are in excess of 360. And again, I need an answer to what's going on here. Mr. Burdenick, if you're listening, I wouldn't sign this resolution if they paid me $1 million, because it's going to come back to bite you, I can tell you that. We have an issue here. We have a new fund that we're making, and the new fund that we're making sounds like an escrow account. The problem is, the person that's contributing to the escrow account usually reaps the benefit of the interest. But here, Pensbury takes taxpayer money by underestimating revenues and overestimating expenses, and they put it in an investment and get to hold it for the taxpayer, while the taxpayer gets to lose their homes or can't replace the car that just broke down that they need to go to work to pay their school taxes. Now, if you vote for this and this new fund, then my next move is to complain both to the Auditor General and the Attorney General for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, because you're creating a fund and stealing the taxpayers' money, and you're collecting the interest on it. It's really that simple, and it's been going on here for a long time. Now, let's look at it real close. Ms. Steffi left a year ago. She took a Pensbury lifeboat off the Pensbury Titanic and went to work. Mr. Burdenick did the same thing. Mr. Longo just took the Life Preserver, and he just declined the Assistant Business Manager's job. So you can tell what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams.
Edward Smith sank the Titanic. Thomas Smith is stank in the Pensbury.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. The next speaker is Richard Kennedy. Isn't that what that says? Maybe seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the next public speaker. Alan Barth.
Alan Barth, Lower Mayfield. Now, I don't claim to know all the ins and outs of this multimillion-dollar school budget, but I do know how much I contribute to it, and it puts a big dent in my household budget. As such, I need to plan accordingly, sometimes foregoing things that are more of a want than a need. Two years ago, Mr. Burdenick announced, and this board didn't question, that Pensbury would need to raise taxes maximum allowable amount for at least the next five years and maybe more. You never specifically said why you needed to do that. Surely, those increases would not even begin to affect the cost of a new high school. So what specifically did you think we needed the money for, even before you presented a budget for it? And yet, you still had a $4.4 million shortfall this year. What are you spending our money on? You elevate personnel unnecessarily, which increases costs. Do we really need another Assistant Superintendent? Dr. Smith, you said Dr. Gibson isn't really doing equity much anymore, but yet she has 13 paid equity liaisons that report to her. And why do we need them if Mr. Waldorf states equity is just in everything we do? Are these positions a need or a want? And now we seem to be in the astroturf field rental business. That is big bucks to build these two fields, with the tenants paying a pittance to rent them. And what if these entities go belly up? Are these fields a need or a want? And while we face a $4 million deficit, we are still adding things to the budget. We are adding AP courses. Even if you use existing faculty, there are still added costs for these courses, one being AP African-American Studies. Are these a need or a want? And at one time, we did have Dr. Delwitch, who was almost willing to spend $3,000 of taxpayer dollars to take an RTK request to appeal, simply because she didn't want to reveal what book she was holding during her swearing-in. And Mr. Selick, who says he requests hundreds of emails through RTKs to read at school board meetings that have nothing to do with the educational needs of Pensbury students, I don't think Jen Neal works for free, her time and effort to get all these RTK requests for him, take taxpayer dollars to fill them. My experience, now, I know these are small things, but my experience has been that even small-expense choices reveal a lot about someone's larger financial decisions. And I could sit here and I could talk to this board about, I don't know, say, my professional licensure in Pennsylvania, or I could talk about the Ohio State University, or maybe even Mannheim Township, Pennsylvania. But these things have nothing to do with the needs of our students. And then we have public speakers that paint a picture of the poor, pitiful school board member that is just a volunteer and doesn't deserve the treatment they get. I agree. Personal attacks are never okay. But when this board is spending $263 million of taxpayer money and they can't balance their budget, I think every member of the public has a right and a responsibility to scrutinize and, yes, criticize. And let's be clear: these volunteers are not, you're not victims as you want them to be portrayed. They're not victims. They campaigned for these positions. They pushed for these positions. You wanted these positions, and you wanted the so-called power that goes along with it. And every member of the public should hold you all to account. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Watermelon.
I'd like to give a moment of silence for Melissa Hortman and her husband, Mark, in Minnesota. They were truth-tellers. I believe I'm somewhat of a truth-teller. I'm willing to die for my cause. Coincidence is God's way of remaining anonymous. The Act 34 resolution for the high school, I've calculated at $482 million. The school district hereby authorized the maximum project cost of whatever, and maximum building construction cost combined, that's $482 million, plus Chris Burdenick calculated an extra $250 million in interest. That brings us down $732 million. I don't know where you all getting your money from, but I can count. Your capping gowns, white for both male and female, graduating class of 2025. They look like Pensbury KKK rally down in South Cackalacky, where I'm from, where I grew up back. From an aerial drone, I heard Governor Shapiro talk. I knew everything was a mistake. Then I saw the face of Leatherface Powsky, pouting. Woo-hoo, you look mad as a... I think you have a hypnotic nightmare. You cannot scream. That's why you're so mad at me. Visible light, I think you all should know about what that is so you understand what blue light is. Look up computer vision syndrome, arc welding. Also, there's a new COVID strain out, razor-blade throat. You should look at that, make sure nobody has that. Truth is treason in an empire of lies. What good is the truth if everyone believes the lie? Powsky violated my First Amendment rights by filing a false police report. You also incited the pals of Powsky, what was his name, Mike? Powsky has a disinhibition, compulsive behavior, distractibility, and lack of insight. This board will be charged with elder abuse. The dream team is a nightmare of Petrekko, Powsky, Steer, DeWitchy with Dirty Taylor Pickle Peppers, filing a false police report with no RTK. Video evidence of an assault in the Falsington small, intimate, low-light, smelly, pussy-willy back room. Powsky has a lack of dignity, respect for the public, and no care for anyone she cannot hug, kiss, grope for stinky pinky pals of Powsky. Power, profit, pay-for-play at Pensbury, but not Afton. Not Afton. I wonder why. Sundowntown, right? Zen City. We can clearly witness the white liberal rage from Powsky. Interruptions on March 27 Wellness Meeting interrupt my viewpoints where Smith, Brown, Steer, Petrekko were there and allowed this Medusa to violate my First Amendment to speak. Then, on the same day, I'm assaulted by Melissa, and I am accused of an assault by the school board members led by Medusa Powsky. Falls Township Police Officer 109 was dispatched to find out why, what, when, and who. Imagerie of areas on his body camera. This Falsington school has cameras, but many of them are dummies or not working. There are no cameras in this alleged assault room. Now, all meetings are held in a shitty cafeteria with poor, poor audio with no RTK cameras. Now, if that is not enough, on June 5, at the facility meeting, Mike from CHA verbally assaults Jennifer Metzger, and Powsky interrupts Mr. Grimm so he could spell her name for him. Also, Medusa Powsky refuses to say "Watermelon." Medusa pay-for-play pals for Petrekko Powsky paid performances for virtual signaling of rape, robbery, murder, shooting. Always, she's always a victim.
Thank you.
You're welcome. May God have mercy on all your souls.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Metzger.
Jennifer?
Hello? Hi, Jennifer. Okay, Jennifer Metzger, Falls Township. A lot to cover. Basically, we have a ton of questions about the taxes. Again, we're doing the maximum increase with no calculation. Of course, we are hiding what is in our general fund, because that is what Pennsylvania Auditor is reviewing for all of the school districts. Charles Bame, this flooding is out of control, okay? You literally have a walkway that they're fixing now after all of the work that was done on the school. Why wouldn't you lower the water table first? Why wouldn't you fix the bridge first? This is a major issue. It just doesn't make any sense, seriously. This is your paperwork. The Homestead/Farmstead Exclusion Resolution, senior tax rebates, this isn't something amazing that you've done. This is something that Pennsylvania has had forever. So glad that more people are eligible for it. Anybody on Social Security, disability, or income that's at $45,000 is eligible to go on to my path for June 30 and apply to get the rebate for either renting or... go on to my path for June 30th and apply to get the rebate for either renting or for real estate taxes. This isn't something that you guys did. It was nice that you took your responsibility for getting 300 people through versus 100 the prior year, but it was actually increased. It's probably the only thing Shapiro did without taking credit at the Pensbury graduation. He did more campaigning than Boyce ever did, but you gave him a letter. So, I don't know. This is just unbelievable. A million dollars on buses, couldn't even tell us how many you had. There was a whole discussion back and forth at the meeting. I'm still not sure I understand under the personnel policy meeting why it is that BCIU has to get paid for us to get a new CFO. I don't understand why Gibson can't do it. She's a doctor, she's educated, paid for the education, she's extremely intelligent. I don't understand why she can't do the recruiting, seriously. We have a resolution for Act 34 hearing. This is extremely important. We need everybody from the community to show up for this. September 4th, 7:00 PM, this is regarding whether or not the high school project is going to move forward. We're telling you, we don't have the money for it. I mean, this is a blue-collar community. We all work very hard. It just, this is absolutely ridiculous. You're maximizing the amount that you're taking for real estate taxes. We're paying hundreds of dollars a month to you, but we're paying only a couple hundred dollars a year to Falls Township? It just doesn't make any sense. You guys aren't using the money that makes any sense. We're still $250 million behind on the pensions for our teachers, retirement. That's not even the $200 million that you guys are spending a year just for their salaries. And then what about the $15 million we're behind on their healthcare? This is a consumable item. It's already gone, and we're still paying for it. We're paying $19.2 million in interest. That's only 1% of our debt. I don't know where all of a sudden you came up with $46 million being paid off in August. I hope that's true for the work that was done on West, but I don't believe it. I really don't. I think you think it's true, and I hope it's true, but I don't believe you. The maintenance that was cut, you guys cut maintenance for 25 years. It wasn't just the last board. It was since Powsky started in 1999. And I understand that she's probably just failing a mandate, and that's great, but it hurts all of us who actually live in Falls Township and have to look at the majority of these buildings. New high school, it's not needed. You guys can fix West. West is 300,000 square feet. East is 200,000 square feet. You could put the extra floor on West. In 1961, when East was built, it was still being patched up then. It was built badly, and that's fine. So, a third of the building needs to be rebuilt. But knocking East over for $4 million just because you want a flat bus depot location is totally inappropriate. That building should be made historic. If it's going to take you decades to save up the money, and I've never heard anyone suggest that you should wait 30 years to save up the money, but if it's going to take you 30 years to save up the money for the $500 million for the school, then it's going to take you the same 30 years to pay it off. So, it's money we don't have. It's a problem. And the RTKs are incomplete. Jen Neal might be spending all her time on it, but she's only sending us half the information at best.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Selick.
I'll pick a place.
Michael Selick, you're our next speaker.
No pass, thank you.
Then our final speaker of the evening is Steve Nolan.
Or just that one? Does this work? Steve Nolan, Newtown, affiliation, retired military. Came into this building and had to go through a metal detector. Someone else mentioned that, actually, they even talked about having guns. It's a sad state of our modern world, and you don't have to look any further than Minnesota in the last few days to see why. We had politicians assassinated by people who have dark rhetoric and fantasies and conspiracy theories and manifestos. Donald Trump, at one of his rallies, said that maybe some Second Amendment person could stop Hillary Clinton. And Ronald Reagan's daughter Patty was pretty upset by that. She chastised the president, but she wrote us all a letter the next day to America since her father had almost been killed by a shooter. And she said that words matter, and that it only takes one person caught in their own dark fantasies to act on them. The Baltimore Sun newspaper was shot up, people killed, right after Donald Trump announced that the press was the enemy of the people. The Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh had many people killed, just 70, by a shooter who declared himself a nationalist, just 72 hours after Donald Trump announced that he was a nationalist. And in El Paso, 23 people were killed, all Hispanic. And when they found the laptop of the shooter, they found all kinds of posts about anti-immigration and the southern invasion, all these Donald Trump postings. And I hope none of us have forgotten January 6th, where 140 of our Capitol Police officers were wounded, and Capitol Officer Brian Sicknick was killed. And Donald Trump summoned them there, and he praised them. At the end of the day, he said that he loved them, and he pardoned every single one of them. And I've had to come to these school board meetings and hear some of the same conspiracy theories. The people that attacked our Capitol violently, I'm sure believed what they believed, that there was a fraudulent election. The problem with it, and I've heard the same thing thrown out here on more than one occasion, many of these same conspiracies, the problem is it's all bullshit. And that's not my word, that's my Attorney General, William Barr, under oath in the January 6th Committee. Went to the President, said he looked into all 50 states, and that he found no election fraud of any significance. And the President wouldn't accept that, so William Barr resigned. That's not my opinion, that's American history. Then the President went to the Ellipse and repeated all the same conspiracy theories. I've been upset to come to this school board and hear a lot of the same conspiracy theories of some of these shooters and from our President, repeated here, lies that are dangerous. And I've had to witness the school board, and tonight is a good example, be yelled at and insulted and basically harassed. And there's a person that's come to this microphone many times, who went online and spread lies about my wife, and without even knowing a shred about my wife, decided that they would talk about her political beliefs and persuasions based on their own fantasies. And I turned it over to the police. I'm not particularly worried about my wife's safety because I consider the person a coward, but that's not the point. Like Patty Reagan said, words matter, and who else hears them and reads them and might act on them? That's the point. And it needs to stop. It needs to stop everywhere, but it needs to stop here as well, with this language and this degradation and this yelling at you and calling you names, and because I think we all know where it can lead.
That was the last community member signed up for public comment, so I'm going to close public comment at 9:46. That is the end of the public's verbal participation in this meeting. Please listen quietly to the remainder of the meeting so that all those present and all those attending virtually or watching the recording at a later date have the opportunity to hear. So, I'd like to first address some confusion about the cost resolution for the high school. So, if you read the explanation of the motion, it states clearly that the board is asked to authorize the maximum project cost of $269,546.95, which includes the maximum building construction costs of $212,409,380. So, that $269 million number includes the building construction costs of $212 million.
It doesn't say that.
It does say that in the public content explaining the motion.
Middle school. So, in response to the student inquiry regarding the musical, one, we plan to have a musical at Pennwood Middle School next year, and two, every year with the responsible management of the budget, unfortunately, difficult personnel matters have to be made, including change of assignments for staff, and that's a part of school management. That sometimes includes involuntary transfer, which is the case in this particular situation. So, moving forward in this circumstance, although a staff member will be moved to another assignment, we can and still continue to plan to have a musical at Pennwood Middle School.
All right. Now, on to the business portion of the meeting. We'll start, do I have a motion to table Item 5A, the proposed Pennwood Targeted School Improvement Plan?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to pull Items 5FF, the BCIU agreement, 5JJ, the psychology internship agreement with Rider, 7K, the Rothman Orthopedics Agreement, 10A and 10B, the motions related to the new high school building project from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay.
Opposed?
Do I have a motion to approve all the remaining items in the consent agenda?
Before we do that, can I ask a question about 9D?
We'll do the motion, and then you can ask the question about 9D.
So moved.
Second. With the motion on the floor, is there any discussion about any of these items?
Okay, 9D. So, 9D is an MOU to take positions that we have now, support staff, and make them flexible positions. So, if somebody is working the day shift, and then we ask them to, for example, work at night, like at the meetings, or to help out with a, you know, whether it's putting out chairs for a play or whatever it is. So, is this every staff member that we're doing this to, that we're going to make them flexible and stop them from earning any overtime?
Please take that.
So, the position is a flex, no, so no, it does not involve overtime. It doesn't prohibit overtime. The position is flexible. We have two positions that currently exist that are part-time positions. The flexibility allows for the hours to start or end based on work that is available. In the case of what is added to the position that you have, any positions that become flexible under that MOU have to be agreed upon by the bargaining unit and the district. And no existing positions are being transitioned as well. It's a, it's a new position that is reflected there that allows the employee doing the work to work remotely and do things that don't necessarily exist within the unit at this time.
Thank you. So, we're talking about basically two employees, two positions?
There's currently two employees that fit under, right now, but in part-time roles. This MOU expands it so that we could have a position that is a full-time role. We don't currently have that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because I know that, you know, we try to save money and balance the budget and all, and, but I don't want to do that on the back of support staff, so I just wanted to ask the question.
And just one added, the position in the MOU indicates the number of guaranteed hours for a full-time employee. If they, if the work is required, they do have the opportunity to earn overtime, even in that MOU language.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification.
Any further discussion? So, as we are approving agenda items, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Ms. Arons?
Aye.
Dr. Delwich?
Aye.
Mr. Canong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamming?
Can I just ask a clarification question? Are we doing the consent agenda right now, or, I thought that's what the motion was?
Yes, this is.
Yes, this is the consent agenda.
And it's still a roll call vote for the consent agenda?
And it's still a roll, yes.
Okay, thank you. Aye.
Mrs. Powsky?
Yes.
Ms. Petrecko?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Waldorf?
Aye.
Dr. Steer?
Aye.
The motion passes. Do I have a motion to approve Items 5FF, the BCIU agreement, 5JJ, the psychology internship agreement with Rider University, and 7K, the Rothman Orthopedics Agreement, subject to solicitor review?
So moved.
I'll second. Do I have any discussion?
Okay, so all of these need to, all of these need to be reviewed by the solicitor, and that's why they were pulled?
That is correct.
And while we're grouping them together? Okay, that was not made clear on why we were pulling them initially.
Yes.
So, okay, thank.
Any further discussion? So, again, because we are approving items, for clarity, I'm going to ask for a roll call
Ms. Arons?
Aye.
Dr. Delwich?
Aye.
Mr. Canong?
Aye.
Mrs. Lamming?
Aye.
Mrs. Powsky?
Aye.
Ms. Petrecko?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Waldorf?
Aye.
Dr. Steer?
Aye.
9-0, motion passes.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 10A, the motion to approve the maximum cost of the new high school project, which includes the maximum cost of the building construction itself?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Just for clarification, I, I know I've asked this before, but I just need clarification. We're setting this amount, but what, what about the, the 20% cost of, um, materials and stuff? I don't understand how we're doing this for this amount of money. And when we look at other schools, I just, I just want clarification that about, you know, change orders and stuff, because we really can't go much more than that.
So just to clarify, um, in terms of inflation index, um, in the first estimate from Dewey, now CHA, they separated that out and had a freestanding inflationary index. When, um...
Had a line item.
As a line item.
Thank you.
As a line item. When SiteLogic did the most recent round of estimates, they realized that with tariffs being what they are, um, and inflation being, um, variable, that having just one line item for inflation wasn't necessarily the best way to look at it. So rather than leave that line item as just an inflationary index that was generic, they incorporated into each line item where they anticipated inflation, a percentage, and it was variable. So for some things it was higher, and for some things it was lower, because that's what they're expecting based on what they're seeing in the market. So the inflationary indexes are all included in this $269 million, um, maximum. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, thank you.
Do I have any other questions from the board? Any other board discussion? Okay. Again, since we are voting to approve a motion, I am going to ask for a roll call vote so that this is very clear.
Ms. Arons?
I'm going to abstain.
Dr. Delwich?
Aye.
Mr. Canon?
Aye.
Mrs. Lamming?
Yes.
Mrs. Polsky?
Yes.
Ms. Petrecco?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Waldorf?
Aye.
Dr. Steer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Eight yes, one abstain.
Do I have a motion to approve agenda item 10B, the motion to approve the Act 34 hearing date and required advertising?
So moved.
Second.
Seeing no board discussion, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote as we are approving an agenda item.
Ms. Arons?
Aye.
Dr. Delwich?
Aye.
Mr. Canon?
Aye.
Mrs. Lamming?
Yes.
Mrs. Polsky?
Yes.
Ms. Petrecco?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Waldorf?
Aye.
Dr. Steer?
Aye.
Nine zero, motion passes.
Now we move on to the board discussion. Um, does anyone on the board have any items to bring forward for the good of the board?
I, I do. So, um, back in our May Wellness, um, meeting, uh, our committee meeting, a group of five students came forward with an idea to, um, make a club to pick up trash around the high school and in the, you know, local neighborhoods, and they cleaned up, uh, Lake Caroline that day. And they came to us and they requested supplies for that. So they needed trash bags and face masks and the grabbers and vests and everything else. So, um, uh, ma, I made some phone calls, and we got them donations of, uh, everything they needed for this year to, to do that cleanup of trash bags, um, grabbers are on order, um, masks, and also a commitment to continue to support these kids in this club so they'll never run out of trash bags. And they're going to order, um, grabbers, and they're good forever. I don't know how many they're ordering, but if we ever need more, they will get us some more. And, um, they're, they're committed to supporting the kids. So I just wanted to thank those people, if you guys don't mind. So it's, um, Mr. Bob Jones of Waste Management, John Palmer, Falls Township Supervisor, um, Matt Tequita, Falls Township Manager, Joe Arneo, who is the, I think he's the Director of Environmental at Falls Township, and, um, two employees who, the next day after our meeting, delivered trash bags and gloves and masks. The very next day was Scott Gouten and Tom McCafferty. So they, they, whatever they had going, they broke it just to get this stuff to our kids. And, um, when I talked to the teacher that runs it, she said that the kids felt very validated, um, after talking to us at our wellness, and then the fact that they were so supported by, um, our community and our township and our employees. So thank you guys for, um, for doing that for the kids. I, I really appreciate it.
Um, Donna, could you, um, thank you for the, doing all that, but it would be really great if we could put it into our record and make it an official donation, maybe at our August meeting, and recognize all those people.
Okay.
Formally.
I'll send you an email.
Well, again, we just, you can send it to, to Tom.
Okay.
It's fine. So thank you.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Burnick for all he's done here. He's done a great job, and I'm certainly going to miss working with him.
Thank you, Donna, for remembering and thanking those people. The Wellness Committee has been very busy this past month. I had the pleasure on Friday of going around to schools. We partner with our nutrition group here at Pensbury, and we run a physical activity competition for all students. At the end of the year, the kids all online put in their physical activity minutes, or I'm not sure how it's calculated. But anyway, one school came, always comes out and shines. This year it was Edgewood, and they will hold on to the trophy for a whole year. In addition to that, the nutrition group identifies three students, one from high school, middle school, and elementary, and the top, um, activity stars win a brand-new bicycle and a, a bike helmet. So with Dr. Steer, Dr. Smith, Dr. Brown, and I, we were at, uh, the high school Charles Bay and Walt Disney this past Friday, presenting the, uh, kids with brand-new bikes and helmets. So thanks to the nutrition group that's always there for everything we need. Thanks.
And just a small clarification, so it's a raffle. So everyone, everyone who enters any wellness activity in the wellness month, um, gets an entry into the raffle, and if their name is drawn for their level, they win a bike. Um, and this year we had, um, I'm trying to remember the name of the, the community organization that brought the bike helmets?
Right.
TMA Bucks. Transportation Management Association.
Association, TMA Bucks. Um, they, um, did make sure that each of our students who won a bike got a helmet to ride it safely. Um, and they actually had extra helmets that they, um, that they left with the district to be used for, um, positive, um, rewards throughout the, the coming year. And as it is the last day of school, I just want to give a huge shout out to our support staff, our teachers, our administration. You do amazing work to help prepare our students for their futures. Um, and I just can't thank you enough. So thank you all, and I hope everybody has a great summer. Lois, do you want to?
Yeah, I do. I always like to close out the year as success, uh, as a successful school year on a positive note and reflect, you know, on all the accomplishments to our amazing students. Your curiosity, hard work, and dedication remind us that learning never ends. We get the privilege each month of sitting here, listening to each school share the highlights and their achievements, and it's really rewarding to see all the work that they put in place along with the support of their teachers and families. So this summer, keep reading, exploring, and dreaming big. Our incredible teachers and staff, your unwavering commitment and passion for education are the heart of the success. And a special thank you to our administration for their vision, leadership, and determination in guiding us forward and ensuring that our whole school community thrives. Enjoy your summer.
Beast. Before we go, um, are we going to address the parent, um, get back to her about the 1.2 mile walk?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, because I don't think that, I think she has a valid point there, so I'm, I hope somebody gets back to her on that.
So with all of those closing words, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?